So, good afternoon and welcome back to this very special session that we have. It's different from the sessions that we've had during the day. It's an in-conversation. Dr. Vidya will be in conversation with the right honourable Joe Johnson. Let me give you a very brief introduction to him. He is a specialist in education and technology policy, with significant roles being played at a number of global universities and board positions at world-leading companies. He is the president's professorial fellow at King's College London, and also a senior fellow at the Harvard Kennedy School, as well as a fellow of Burghwick College, University of London, and a member of the council of the Dyson Institute for Engineering and Technology. He is chairman of the Board of Access Creative, the largest independent provider of further education specialist training for the creative industries, and a board member of Tech Nation, the UK government-funded growth platform for the tech sector. So, I should apologize that I didn't unmute myself effectively at the very beginning. He also serves as chairman of the Advisory Board of Applied Board, the world's leading platform for international student recruitment, and is a member of the European Advisory Board of Samsung Electronics. A member of the House of Lords, a member of the Privy Council, a governor of the Ditchley Foundation, and a member of the European Council. A member of Parliament between 2010 to 2019, he held prominent positions in government under three prime ministers, including head of the Number Ten Downing Street Policy Unit, and Member of State Attending Cabinet for Universities, Science, and Innovation. Interestingly, before entering Parliament, he worked at the Financial Times for thirteen years, in a variety of roles, including as associate editor, and very interestingly for us, the South Asia judge. He's written two very interesting books, including Reconnecting Britain and India: Ideas for an Enhanced Partnership, which is co-edited with Dr. Rajiv Kumar, and The Man Who Tried to Buy the World. We're so happy to have you with us. Let me give you a very brief idea of Symbiosis, because I'm going to assume that you may not know a little bit about how we started. Symbiosis was set up by a Botany professor in 1971. The founder was this Botany professor, Dr. S. B. Musundar. He is the chancellor now of Symbiosis International University. And in response to the situation that African and Asian students faced in Pune, especially at that point of time, from racial discrimination to struggling to align and assimilate into the culture at that point of time, Symbiosis as an idea was established. Since 1971, Symbiosis has grown from being an intercultural centre, providing a home away from home for foreign students who primarily came from African and Asian countries, to now being a university, an international university, whose vision is to promote international understanding through quality education. And if you've heard of this Sanskrit saying, "Vasudhaya vahupumbhaka", meaning "the world is one family", that's the objective. The chancellor, Dr. S. B. Musundar, spoke in the morning at the inaugural, and he spoke about this. This is his continued passion, that education and only education can bridge differences, appreciate differences, and have respect for all the differences that we have. His daughter, who you know, Dr. Vidya Yerodhaker, is the principal director of Symbiosis Society, which has a number of not only the university but also has schools and colleges under it. She's also the pro-chancellor of the Symbiosis International University, and her scholarship is primarily in the internationalisation of higher education. So, extremely happy to have you with us. I'm now going to hand over to Dr. Vidya, who's going to be in conversation with you. I believe it's going to be a free-ranging conversation on a number of topics. We look forward to this conversation. Over to you, Dr. Vidya.
So, thank you, Anita, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for accepting our invitation. Both of us were on a common platform a few months ago, and you know, the way you spoke, I immediately told Anita that we need to bring him here at this conference as well. In fact, we would have been happy for you to come down to India and be at Symbiosis International University campus, but unfortunately, we couldn't have this campus, this conference in person and you're here with us virtually. But I learned that you are going to be in India very soon, and we hope to see you on our campus too. So, as Anita very rightly said, this session is a little different from the other sessions. It's not a panel discussion, and it's not even just a monologue from you, but we will have a nice conversation. I will give a little bit of background of the questions that I want to ask you, and then, you know, through a Q and A with me, you know, we'll bring in a lot of things from UK, UK-India partnerships, et cetera. What we can learn from UK and, you know, how significant the national education policy reflects in our higher education system, et cetera. And later, if we have time, then there will be questions from the audience as well. I hope you can take those also. So, let me begin saying that you had an important role of a minister for university science, research, and innovation, and you introduced the Higher Education and Research Act 2017, which the Times Higher Education described as the most significant legislation in twenty-five years. This actually overhauled the whole regulatory framework for British universities and replaced the Higher Education Funding Council for England with a new regulator, the Office for Students, and it also established mechanisms to hold universities more accountable for the quality of teaching and student outcomes. And let us all applaud you for this wonderful initiative of yours. Now, this act also created a new national strategic research body, the UK Research and Innovation, bringing together the UK's fragmented research funding bodies together. Now, my question to you is, what are the key takeaways from the Higher Education and Research Act 2017, which would benefit India in developing its educational strategy? You know that we've just launched the National Education Policy in 2020, and we too believe that all these various research funding bodies should now come together under one umbrella, which we call it as a national research foundation. So, let me have your thoughts.
Great, well, thank you, Dr. Vidya, and thank you for inviting me to be part of this fascinating conference. I'm actually in the east coast of the United States at the moment, but notwithstanding the massive time difference, I've been tuning in and benefiting from the wisdom of all of the eminent panelists and speakers that you've gathered together at Symbiosis and learnt an enormous amount over the last few hours, between 2:00 AM and 7:00 AM my time. So, but it's been fascinating. And, you know, what a great time to be discussing these issues. Your question is a very, very interesting one, which is, what are the takeaways from the reforms which we put in place in the UK with the passage of the Higher Education and Research Act for potential application in India? And I think there are sort of very striking similarities, in some senses, obviously also massive differences. But the NEP and the UK's Higher Education and Research Act are both massive reforms, huge reforms, so big you could sort of see them from space in terms of what they're planning to do to the two countries' higher education and research systems. Looking at the Higher Education and Research Act, it was a response to challenges which are felt all around the world, including in India, namely, how do you expand access and widen participation and massify your higher education system without losing quality, lowering standards, and sacrificing student outcomes? And how do you do all of that in a context which is affordable within finite public spending constraints and limited ability to tap the taxpayer indefinitely for further funding for higher education? So, that is the core constraint. And the Higher Education and Research Act was an attempt to answer that question. And it responded to the particular decisions that have been taken over time in the United Kingdom about how best to fund higher education, in which successive governments, starting with Tony Blair's Labour governments in the mid-1990s, decided to shift funding and to share the burden of funding between the student and the taxpayer. So, Tony Blair, as you may remember, in 1998, 1997, 1998, introduced a system of top-up fees whereby students were charged £1,000 as a contribution towards the cost of their higher education experience. Labour then trebled that fee to £3,000 in the middle of the first decade of this millennium, and the Conservatives then in 2011, 2012, trebled it again to £9,000 in the period of their first term in office. So, we went from a situation where the taxpayer and the government funded the totality of higher education to one in which the student themselves took on a significant proportion of the cost of higher education. It was never the totality of the cost, because it was a loans-based system, and the government consciously put in place a system in which students were able not to repay until they were earning above a certain threshold that represented roughly the median earnings in the country, namely, around £27,000 as it stands today. So, the government always expected to be writing off a significant proportion of the loan book, but the burden shift to the student was very considerable, and we needed to put in place a system of regulation that reflected that change in the way higher education was being funded. This was a major shift for the sector. What it entailed was the abolition of a system of provider-led regulation that had been in place for over a hundred years, when after the First World War, the UK set up what had been called the University Grants Committee, which then transformed into something called the University Grants Council, and then finally, in its final iteration, the Higher Education Funding Council for England. And these bodies are not dissimilar, from my understanding, to the system of regulation and funding that exists in India today with your university, your UGC. We decided that because of the way we'd shifted funding towards the student consumer, we needed to abolish this old model and put in place one in which we had not a funding system, but one of a regulator of market regulations. We created a new market regulator, the Office for Students. And this represented, as I said, a profound shift in terms of regulation and oversight. And it reflected the fact that because we were reducing the amount of funding into the system that was coming directly from the government to a really very residual amount, barely £1.4 billion in grant funding that was going to universities from the old Higher Education Funding Council for England, the government really didn't have the levers it needed anymore to maintain quality and standards as the system expanded and as more people went into higher education. And that's why I decided, we decided as a government, to create this new body, the Office for Students, which would have the levers that government no longer had primarily through the funding tool, it would have the levers legally to ensure that quality and standards and student outcomes were being upheld. So, the OFS, the Office for Students, the primary interest was no longer to ensure that universities were adequately funded, but to ensure that the student who is being taught and who was paying tuition fees through graduate repayments was getting value for money. And this inevitably was a controversial reform, because many universities mistakenly still assumed that the role of the new body was to support them and to fund them, rather than to protect the interests of students. Other similarities with the NEP. The Higher Education and Research Act, as you mentioned, Dr. Vidya, also aimed to reform the way research in the UK was funded and organised. We looked around at our research system, and in many respects, it looked to be highly performing. The UK represents, you know, about 1% of the world's population, 3% of the world's researchers, and accounts for about 13 or 14% of the world's most impactful research. But we looked around at our research system, the way it was organised, into seven different discipline-facing research councils, and it was clearly deficient in a number of ways, particularly in the sense that it was preventing our communities of scientists from working together in interdisciplinary and multidisciplinary ways due to the way funding was organised in discipline-facing silos. And it was also sort of adding up to lesser the sum of the parts in terms of how it related to government and how it related to partners around the world. Because it was so fragmented between these various research councils, government had difficulty in establishing a single point of accountability for the value for money it was deriving from public spending on R and D. The creation of a single point of accountability to government with UKRI was really transformative in terms of the research community's relationships with the Treasury, which controls the purse strings, and significantly increased the confidence the Treasury in substantially increasing funding for R and D in the UK. So, from India's point of view, I would be very optimistic about the positive benefits of the creation of the new body that is being contemplated by the NEP. I think it's called the National Research Foundation. Because our experience in the UK was that creating a sort of a single point of accountability, if that indeed is what is intended in India, was very, very positive for the government's willingness to allocate more funding. And in the UK, we've seen, you know, some of the biggest increases in spending on R and D that we've ever seen in our history. And we're now sort of heading towards a longstanding goal of spending 2.4% of GDP on R and D by 2027. That certainly is the roadmap that the government has set out. And I don't believe the community would have been successful in getting those promises of big increases in funding if it hadn't been able to clarify reporting lines and lines of accountability to government for that spending. The last point I'd make about the creation of UK research and innovation was that it deliberately tried to tighten the links between research and business and the world of innovation. So, we incorporated in this research funding body our Public Agency for Supporting Innovation and Knowledge Transfer, which in the UK is known as Innovate UK. And I'm not sure what the intention is in India with that, in that respect, whether there is a plan to bring in sort of knowledge transfer support agencies and innovation agencies into the research organisation. Certainly, in the UK, our experience was that that was incredibly positive for funding for innovation and knowledge transfer. And Innovate UK, within this new organisation, UKRI, has itself also benefited from substantial uplifts in funding. And also, I think it's benefited, you know, the processes of knowledge transfer between universities and the business community themselves. Those are some of the sort of superficial similarities. What I would lastly say is, you know, clearly, it's all very well having reforms on paper, implementing them and getting them done requires huge focus and commitment, and it requires governments to be consistent in their willingness to drive forward an agenda. And there again, you know, you see in India, very strong prime minister-level support for this agenda, which bodes very well, I think, for prospects for the implementation of the NEP. And we've had in the UK, you know, a fairly long period of conservative coalition or conservative majority government, which has enabled these reforms to be implemented at some pace. And I think that's absolutely vital. You know, when you're doing a very, very big reform programme like this, you do need consistency of vision and consistency in terms of the ministers who are there to take the programme forward. And I think there's a clear similarity between India and the UK in that respect.
Yes, thank you very much. And exactly on the same lines, I think the NEP, which is, you know, now conceptualised as the National Research Foundation, we also have the National Innovation Foundation. So, hopefully, all the other smaller bodies that fund research will be brought under the same roof. And then we will...
No, no, no problem at all. Sorry, I was just charging, plugging my computer in before I ran out of battery.
So, as you very rightly said, that we, you know, we definitely need to bring in innovation and research together. That's what the NEP is talking about. We are all waiting for the implementation part, of course. A huge amount of budget has been allocated for the National Research Foundation, and so hopefully, we will see a lot of funding coming from a single channel to the Indian universities. Now, my next question. So, it is believed that 2030 roadmap for India-UK future relations will create a revitalised and dynamic connection between the two nations and elevate the relationship to a comprehensive strategic partnership. The MOU that has been signed states that participants will promote the take-up of higher education opportunities by nationals of both the countries through initiatives such as university missions, student fairs, raising the awareness and understanding of educational opportunities, including scholarships, schemes, associations, internships, and relevant immigration laws and regulations. Moreover, we can also expect the exchange of ideas on the India-UK partnership by leading think tanks, institutes, and various initiatives towards strengthening the role of women in STEM at schools and institutions. Now, with these set goals, what according to you are the highest priorities of UK institutes to enhance the development of direct partnerships between higher education institutions of both countries?
I mean, the UK-India relationship is, you know, it's it's one that's in general long been underperforming its potential in a number of respects. On the trade side, the UK has been slipping down the ranks of India's trading partners quite solidly, quite consistently over the last couple of decades, from second in 1999 to, you know, fourteenth or fifteenth now. The bright side of the relationship is very much on the sort of people-to-people, the living bridge side, and on the relations between our higher education institutions and between our researchers. When you look at, you know, who we're collaborating with around the world, you know, India, the UK is India's second most frequent research collaborator after the US. And by our calculations, we think we are the country with which India collaborates with most in Europe. But we're very far from being complacent in the UK, and we want to do more to develop R and D ties with India. And we are doing much, much more with China than we are doing with India. China, as you may know, is about to overtake the US as the UK's most important research partner. By contrast, you know, India is, although we want to do much more with India, India is only our sixteenth most important research partner at the moment. It's rising much more slowly up the ranks of the UK's research partners than China has, whereas China has gone from being our ninth most important research partner a decade ago to, as I said, being poised to overtake the US right now. India has gone from 22nd place a decade ago to 16th place now. So, it's progressing much more slowly than China is as a research partner for the UK. And I want to accelerate that. I want to ensure that the UK government is doing everything it can for its part to facilitate more partnerships, more collaboration between individual researchers and institutions. There are a lot of good reasons to do that. You know, starting with the, you know, the quality of the science as the main driver, it speaks for itself that when we do collaborate together, we generally create very impactful research that's more impactful than the research either country produces on its own. And that's, you know, that's commonly found when countries collaborate with each other internationally. But what is striking to me is that the research that India and the UK do together is more impactful than the research that the UK and China do when they collaborate together. So, there's lots of reasons for us to invest more in this relationship. It produces impactful research. And, you know, when you look at the geopolitics of the world today, dismal as they are, you know, you might think that research collaborations between two democracies are likely to be able to withstand the storms of our times better than other relationships out there. So, there's a lot of reason to invest in this relationship. And I'm hopeful that the Free Trade Agreement that the two countries are now seeking to put in place will have at its heart what you might call a comprehensive knowledge partnership that would put in place many of the building blocks that would facilitate more collaboration and as well as more student mobility between our two countries.
Absolutely. But through UKRE and also through the SPARC funding that is offered by the government or the Ministry of Education, we do see a little increase in the research partnerships than before. But I agree with you fully that we need to definitely enhance these. And I don't think really we should wait for the governments. There are private institutions here in India that can certainly look at, you know, partnerships with UK universities. And all this begins with student mobility. So, I come to my next question to you. India has been the second-largest sending country, right, next to China? And with the young population, with a very, very large young population in India, obviously, you know, the eyes of the world are towards India. Now, here, you know, one of the regulations that you all came up with of discontinuing the post-study work visa definitely hampered, you know, the number of Indian students going to UK in 2011. Of course, later in 2018, you reintroduced the post-study work route, and therefore, we now see some increase, but not very significant. So, my question to you is that by keeping in view these constant policy changes and other political and economic variables, how can the issue of declining student mobility and student exchange be tackled? I mean, shouldn't governments really worry about such policies that are probably made at rock and not in the interest of students?
Yeah, you're absolutely right to draw attention to the post-study work visa. That's been a big driver of demand for study in the UK over the last two or three years, when it was first sort of highlighted as on its way. Numbers from India have rocketed back up, having declined in the middle of the last decade due to the removal of that post-study work option by the Theresa May administration when she was Home Secretary in about 2013. Numbers from India are now on a trajectory such that Indian students will represent the largest body on campus of any single group, exceeding the Chinese body. And that is a very, very striking development. You know, just three years ago, there were six times as many Chinese students as Indian students at UK universities. By my reckoning, within the next couple of years, we are likely to see the Indian student body outnumber the very, very large body of Chinese students at UK higher education institutions. And that's a great development. It's terrific to see that demand for UK higher education, and it's great that we're going to have more people, you know, with an understanding of British, you know, culture, society, our worldview, and able to develop, you know, ties of friendship that later turn into ties of trade, investment, and so on. So, that's all, that's all good. I think that there is a real risk to the pattern of student flows, and everyone on this, at this conference, will be acutely aware of it. And they are highly imbalanced. I think overall, India's inward-to-outward student mobility ratio is something like 1 to 10. But when it comes, or 1 to 20, something of that order. But when it... But when it comes to the inward outbound student mobility ratio to the UK, it's something like one to three hundred. So there is a, there is a gross imbalance in that relationship, in that respect. And the UK government and, you know, I would hope also the Indian government might want to look at mechanisms to encourage more outbound mobility from the UK to Indian institutions so that we can have a, a, a flow of students in two directions that is, that is more balanced than it is at the moment. I think the UK government should assist in this respect in a number of, in a number of ways. Our levels of sort of Asia literacy generally are pretty low. And I think governments should recognize that this is a significant problem for us as a country, given, as we heard in an earlier panel discussion, the shifting center of global economic gravity towards Asia. How, how on earth can we continue to have, you know, our countries, our, 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 our young people so, so sort of unaware of, of the, the major societies that are going to be such important players in the, in the geopolitics of the future? So we've got to address our low levels of Asia literacy. And I think we need to set some clear goals for programs such as our Turing Scheme, which replaced for the UK our previous membership of the European Union's Erasmus Plus Program. So we've set up our own student mobility program called the Turing Scheme. And I think we should set some clear objectives for it to increase quite dramatically the number of UK students who are going to countries in Asia, especially India, to, to learn about them and to, and to undertake courses of study. And that would be a, an, an important objective in my view.
I, I fully agree that, you know, it has to be a bilateral mobility of students. But what we see is when Indian students move to UK, it's either for the undergraduate or the postgraduate full-time degree programs. And when you see UK students coming to us, they generally come for a semester exchange or a study abroad program. And this brings me to my next question to you about mutual recognition agreements. You know, when you look at such kind of mobility of students or faculty members, or even when it comes to research collaborations, we definitely need to discuss the mutual recognition agreements. And sometimes we also see that some of our degrees don't get recognized. I'm a medical doctor by training. And I see so many of my friends who've done their post-graduation here in India, can practice in India, but obviously because of, you know, the degrees or the medical degree is not being recognized, they have to go through the whole residency program once again in the UK. So would you have any thoughts and do you think countries need to come together for better, betterment of student mobility as well as even professional mobility?
Yes, absolutely. And I would hope that the free trade discussions that are now underway between our, our two countries will have this as a major objective to iron out many of these issues around the recognition of qualifications. You know, I think on the UK side, we had long, had a longstanding objective of trying to secure recognition of the UK's one-year master's program, which doesn't find favor with the, with the Indian authorities. So there are issues on both sides which, which do need to be ironed out. And this, the desire to put in place a free trade agreement and to, and to have this sort of, and to achieve milestones for the relationship in the twenty thirty vision that the two prime ministers have set out gives us a real timeline to, to tackle these longstanding barriers to, to student mobility and to the development of research partnerships. Because, you know, if, if, if students can't come to the UK and do a one-year master's, that's not recognized, it's very difficult for them to progress into research positions and to undertake research collaborations thereafter. So it's a real barrier to the, to the development of, of, of much deeper relationships between our countries. And I hope the trade agreement can, can help, can help fix it. But overall, you know, I'm, I'm extremely optimistic about it. I mean, there's a real feeling in the UK that there's a sort of an, an alignment of interests now in terms of making progress on this FTA than, than there has been in a very long time. You know, in the UK, we are in a post Brexit world. Now, we are actively looking to take advantage of the freedoms we've got to conduct our own trade policy with countries around the world where, within the constraints of negotiating within E, within an EU framework, we were unable to, to make that kind of progress. And I really hope that, you know, the India FTA, as and when it appears, can be a highlight of how, you know, the UK is managing to make something of the opportunities that Brexit has provided it.
Yeah, absolutely. And now with the national education policy rolling out a one-year master's program here, even in India, I'm sure, you know, the mutual recognition of the master's, one, one-year master's program in the UK will be recognized here in India as well. So we also see a huge transformation in the Indian higher education system, a lot probably learned from the UK higher education system. The NEP also talks about internationalization. In fact, for the first time after thirty-four years, you see a national education policy with a very strong focus on internationalization of higher education and more specifically, transnational education. It also speaks about dual degrees, about twining degrees. And therefore, with these being rolled out, we will see a huge mobility. But do you see the same kind of acceptance, you know, in, of students or faculty in this transnational education with UK universities? Or do you think there will be a challenge to this kind of transnational education?
I think, you know, it's, it's the holy grail of higher education. One of the holy grails of higher education is to have a, you know, a truly functioning credit transfer, credit accumulation and transfer system. And, you know, within countries, they barely, in many countries, they, they might exist on paper, but they're seldom, you know, really extensively used in practice. In the UK, for example, we have in theory a credit accumulation and transfer system between UK institutions. But less than two percent of students each year actually take advantage of mobility between institutions in one country. The European credit transfer system, you know, as, as has been discussed earlier in the school and the European research area, are, are work in progress. And obviously, you know, the Bologna mechanism assists in many respects. It's an, it's, it's, it's an altogether different order of magnitude of complexity to start doing it, you know, across, across continents. But I'm optimistic and I, I would hope that, again, within the framework of the free trade agreement that we're developing, that we can put in place commitments to put in place, at least in, at least on paper for the time being, the building blocks of a credit accumulation and transfer system that might function between the UK and India. Whether institutions then actually take advantage of, you know, that theoretical possibility is, is a whole another question. My, my expectation is that technological disruption will accelerate adoption and be a big driver of uptake in this respect. There are platforms which are going to enable students to see the pathways that are actually available to them in a way which really hasn't been possible up until now. Because universities tend not to advertise their credit transfer routes. They tend to bury them in paperwork. They're very difficult to find on, in university documentation. But there is clearly scope for tech to highlight the pathways that are possible and also the pathways that are latent between institutions. I, if institution A partners with institution B, and institution B partners with institution C, but institution A doesn't partner with institution C, there's clearly a pathway between A and C that should be potentially possible for institutions to create. And tech is going to make those kind of links much more visible to, to students and I think drive demand for joint degrees, joint programs, credit stacking in a way that we haven't seen over recent decades and which explains the sort of the agonizing processes and that, that regional associations go through in term, in, in trying to put together networks on paper that are never really used in practice. I do think the world is, is, is changing. And I think the big tech platforms will help drive that process over the coming decade.
I fully agree with you. You know, I think it's an exciting time to be a student, really, than be a teacher, because it's, you know, it's such a confusing environment. Even with this new education policy, we are looking forward to actually implementing the academic bank of credit. You know, where students can actually accumulate credits and deposit in their accounts from different institutions. And I think these different institutions need not be just different Indian institutions. But if we really have a joint credit policy, then it could be even UK institutions from where students can gather these credits. And you so very rightly said that technology has disrupted all this. I mean, it's become much easier. Even today, the Indian government for the, the, the category one universities or the well-accredited universities allows almost forty percent of credits being taken, you know, online, through online platforms. So I'm sure universities that, that are way ahead in, you know, using technology, students from those universities will certainly be benefited. Coming to a different personality of yours now that you've authored several books. And one of your book, of course, the one that you edited along with a close friend of Simvise's, Mr. Rajiv Kumar, the vice chairman of, you know, NITIyal Yoga, on reconnecting Britain and India. So what prompted you to actually, you know, edit this book or even conceptualize this book, any, any specific reasons? And I can see the need of authors as well.
Yeah, no, I was, I was lucky to get to know Dr. Rajiv Kumar when I was based in, in Delhi for the Financial Times. And when I entered UK politics, after I left the Financial Times, you know, it was clear to me that, you know, we needed to put some focus on the UK-India relationship and to, you know, stop assuming things and actually, you know, try and, try and accelerate, you know, the, our, 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 our progress in achieving the potential of the relationship. And I felt very frustrated by, you know, the, the sort of, our, our gentle slide into, into irrelevance as a trading partner for India in particular. It sort of was, it would cause such frustration to me when I saw such potential for Britain in India and India in Britain, that we were becoming less and less relevant to each other. And so I wanted to, you know, put out, put a, put a collection of, of great writers and thinkers to the task of trying to demonstrate that there were great things to be doing together and to articulate to government, hopefully, definitely in the UK, but hopefully also in India, that it would be a, a rewarding thing to do to focus a bit more on the, on the bilateral relationship with two countries that, that have, 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 have so much in common in so many ways.
So I'm glad that you've done this and I think it will be a good reading, though I haven't read the book, but I'll certainly ask for a copy. Another very interesting book that you've both authored is The Man Who Tried to Buy the World, and I will not give details of this. We would like you to speak a little bit about, you know, this book. And what were the major factors which influenced you to write a book on John Murray Vassil? And the next question, I will cover it here, and what are the aspects of the book that will help students, especially business management students?
Well, that, that was just a, it was a tale of sort of corporate megalomania. And they, they come along with, you know, depressing frequency. And, you know, there's, there's one every sort of five or, five or six years of sort of corporate titans who, who become over mighty, fall foul of governments and have a sort of Icarus-like fall. And it was one of those. And it was emblematic of, of the, of the, of the, of the times that we were then living in during the height of the, of the dot com boom and, and the, the sort of the excitement of the, in France, that it was going to create a, a media giant that was going to take on the sort of the, the US tech giants like Google and Apple and so on. So it was a tale about France and America, France's hangups about America, France's hangups about, you know, its exceptionalism and its desire to, you know, resist the tide of, of sort of Anglo-Saxon cultural oppression. That was what it was all about. And I found it a fascinating tale. But thank you for mentioning it. It was, I, I, it was a very long time ago that I wrote it, Dr. Vidya.
There are students of business management as well here, and I think it would be a great reading for the faculty as well as our students. So it was a great conversation. I think questions from my side are over. I would like, Anita, are there any questions from the audience? Anita, that you would like to take forward?
Yes, there are a couple of questions from the audience. Mr. Johnson, could I?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. So one of the questions is, a report you have written talks about UK creating reforms or the need for UK to create reforms to bolster competitiveness and long-term sustainability of the UK position in international education with the aim of two things. Number one, reducing dependency on China. And two, driving out fraud and abuse that often threatens the integrity of the visa system. Would you like to comment on, about that?
Um, yeah, I mean, I wanted to put, make sure that India was no longer on the so-called high-risk country list, which the UK operates, because I thought there were better, better ways of managing the risks in a visa system than sort of effectively stigmatizing certain countries by putting them on sort of lists which require greater scrutiny than, than, than that. I, I, I felt it was the wrong way to, to tackle, to tackle it. I think all countries should be on a level playing field and all students should require the same level of, of scrutiny in terms of their applications. Well, there are technological solutions to how student applications are processed that can, that can operate on a level playing field. So I wanted to effectively abolish this idea of a high-risk country list that, that effectively subjected students from those countries to, to sort of lengthy and laborious bureaucratic paper-based processes when there were robust technology solutions that could do the job much more effectively. That was the, that was the principal point I was making.
So do you think that is likely to happen? Is this in process?
Well, i- i- it should be. You know, our home offices in all countries tend to be, you know, quite slow-moving and conservative. And they've got their own policy priorities to, to deal with. And, you know, accelerating student mobility is seldom top of their list of priorities. And, you know, obviously, they've got, they're, they're always competing policy interests across government. And I think in the UK, we need to shift the dial a bit more towards, you know, especially given where we are in the, in the, in, in the world right now. You know, we need to, we need to make the most of our cultural assets, our, our, our sort of the appeal of our higher education institutions and shift the dial a little bit more towards openness and, and promoting international education and away from sort of these bureaucratic processes that are designed essentially to keep people out rather than to, rather than to enable people to come in.
I think, I think in India, it's just the same, Mr. Johnson, you know. One of the reasons why foreign students shudder to, you know, even apply for visas is, you know, a very stringent process. And therefore, I keep saying in many of my dialogues that, you know, we need not just the Ministry of Education, but we need to also involve the External Affairs as well as the Ministry of Home Affairs, because they are the ones who maybe trouble the students more. And that is one of the reasons why students would not look at India as a destination. So I agree with you.
If I can ask just one more question, the need for lifelong education is now well-accepted. You also work very closely with the tech sector. How do you think that we can, we can make affordable, quality, lifelong or continuing education available for those who really need it?
Um, well, it's a, it's a, it's a real challenge. And I can only sort of speak about what, what we're doing in the UK. But we've, we've recently announced that we're going to totally change the way we fund higher education. So instead of sort of a, a system in which you, you get funding for a three- or four-year degree in a one, in a one-bite chunk, we've now said that you're going to have a lifelong learning entitlement whereby you'll get four years of funding, but you can spend it how you like in, in credit-sized chunks, in module-sized chunks or in years of study or semesters of study over the course of your working life. But you will have that entitlement to government loans to, to, to the value of four years of funding. And the intention of that is to enable people to feel that they've got other routes other than the classic. Sort of three-year bachelor's degree or four-year bachelor's degree. So that they can maybe start by doing a certificate or a diploma for one or two years at a level four or level five in our system. And then maybe top it up later with an honors degree that gets them that level six bachelor's degree qualification. And maybe then thereafter with a level seven additional master's year of study. Um so that's the idea is, you know, much like your NEP is setting out. Is to create a system where you can dip in and out of study, you can store credits with a, you know, your academic bank of credits or. What our, what our credit accumulation system will represent. And in that, and then, and in that senses, and sorry, and in that sense, India is very much ahead of the UK, I would say, in terms of. Legislating for the academic bank of credit and putting it on an institutional footing in that way.
And I'm very much aware that you have applied to cats, Dr. Vidya?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for an excellent in-conversation session with you. And we hope to see you at Simba's very soon, hopefully in June when you travel to India. Uh it's been a wonderful session. I'm sure the audience was extremely happy. And I hope we bring uh Britain and India together. I mean, the, you know, the title of your book of reconnecting Britain and India actually becomes a reality. I'm sure we will work towards it and we will stay in touch for sure. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much and I look forward to coming to Pune. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you for joining us for this in-conversation with the right on, Dr. Johnson.